Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Announcements, the next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, May 8th, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Cell phones, silence, or turn them off. Need a motion to approve of the consent agenda.
I shall move.
Second. I have no comments at this time. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got some questions on the Treasury report. I noticed on page nine, and I'm glad Greg's here and Tanya, because on page nine, we've got two invoices were cut, one for $6,000 and one for $4,000 to a grossing and paying tree service. And I'll go through the first one, probably the easiest of the two, I think. One was for $4,000 for dead tree removal, and I guess this was along Sonna Lake Boulevard?
The checks in this case were multiple invoices. I don't have the detail invoices with me today.
You what?
I don't have the detail invoices with me today.
I've got them.
Okay, so one of them was Sonna Lake Boulevard, yes.
Yeah, one was tree removal, and it's, I tried to follow the timeline on this thing. The purchase hour was written on 3/13, and the invoices were cut on the same day. One describes a removal of 28 sand trees in a swamp by the sidewalk by west end by San Bruno, and another was dead tree removal west of Town Hall. What was the purpose of doing this?
If you recall, those were all part of wetland 272, and when they moved the power lines, those trees were in direct impact with the power lines. Unfortunately, they weren't growing under the power lines, so the power company wasn't going to take care of them. Additionally, we've had numerous requests over the years to address those trees because they were a threat to fall over the sidewalk. These were trees that were dead. They were in the middle of a wetland, and we were doing what we thought was necessary to protect all the assets of the district.
And Duke Parr was notified and asked them if they could clear it out?
They won't touch them. They weren't under their lines.
Did we get a permit to go and impact the wetland?
We did not. If you don't change the biomass of the wetland, you don't require a dredge and fill permit.
I thought we had to get a permit, and if we removed any of that stuff, we had to get a dredge and fill permit.
We didn't remove it. We felled it right into the wetlands.
We got neither permit?
We did not need a permit for the work we did. We felled the trees into the wetlands.
You don't need a permit to go in and cut anything out of a wetland?
No.
You don't?
If you cut the trees and you fell them into the wetland, you are not changing the biomass of the wetland. You do not need a permit.
Okay, this invoice is for over $4,000. Procedures were not followed on, purchasing procedures were not followed. This is over $4,000. Anything between $2,500 and $10,000 has to have, according to procedure, has to have three written estimates, and there is no estimates on this. There's invoices from the person that did the work, but there was no estimates, so procedures weren't followed on that one. On the second invoice, for $6,000, it's got, describes tree removal, and there's four items, tree removal, tree removal, tree removal, four items of tree removal, and then tree removal of stumps. One for $1,700, another one for $1,700, another one for $2,000, another one for $600 for stump removal. These were, there are four trees removed and stumped, and this was Deer Run, front nine. I drove Deer Run, front nine, and I found stump that was removed on number six at the 150-yard line. There was a tree there that the district removed the tree a couple of years ago, and that's the only place I could find that there. Between six and seven, there's a tree stumped, and that's all I could find. On the back nine, number 10, there's a small pine tree stumped, and on number 17, I found two trees stumped but not removed, and this was supposed to have been, and I can find no place where there was ten stumps removed anywhere unless I missed it, and I couldn't miss it. I drove the whole golf course and looked at it, looked at it pretty close. So, I can't find, I can't find a correlation between what the guy said. Did you inspect the work?
Yes.
You went out and physically inspected that everything was done. I agree with what was done on Edgewater, but I do not agree with what was done on Deer Run, because I think the level of activity we were billed for doesn't come close to what I can find out on the golf course.
I think you want to identify?
Short of going out there and showing you, I don't.
Well, what I'd like to do, rather than I get involved with it, is maybe have yourself and maybe security go out and maybe show them and get a written report back to us that what really happened. I don't think we got our money's worth. I think the guy may have had it. I don't know. I just want to make sure that we're spending money and we're getting value for what we're spending for. And this is, this is another case of procedures not being followed at all. Absolutely. You've got to have three quotes, you've got to have three bids, okay? And we got a P.O. written on 2/25. The invoices were cut on 2/25. We got a note on one of the invoices from the supplier, date of estimate 3/4, which is a week after the P.O. was written. We got another note, 2/26, was a day after the invoice was received or written. 3/3, none of the, we're not following any procedures. That's what they were written for, they were written for the purpose of protecting the public money, and it's our responsibility to look at this kind of stuff, and if we see something wrong, call it to someone's attention. So, as I said before, would you be willing to go out with, say, Mike, and show him exactly what was done on the golf course relative to what we were charged for?
Why don't we do this, since it's on the golf course? Why don't we have Mr. Bell verify it?
I would like to have Mr. Bell and Greg and a third party, one of the supervisors. I don't want to get involved with it, because I don't want somebody to say sorry or grace, but I don't think that work was done completely. I just don't think so.
We'll be glad to send the board a report on that, and you are correct. We have used Croson and Payne, or Payne and, they merged, for probably 10 years as the only tree service that we've used out here. They've used them for years and years. We never know exactly how much work we're going to have. Sometimes we'll exceed the bid limit, sometimes we don't, but Ms. Kennedy, and I've already discussed it, and there's that one and probably some other areas where we need to go to bid and get an hourly rate, and so that we have it and we know who to call. One of the reasons we have used that particular vendor is they know the golf course, they've done it for years, they know where the sprinkler heads are, they know where to get on the golf course, and they've been very good about not damaging it, so.
I don't have any problem with.
We can certainly go to bid on that, and quite honestly, there's some other areas that we've looked at that haven't come up yet that we probably need to go to bid and make sure that we're doing it according to the letter of the law.
I think, I think in the case of like the engineering firm that we use, they got all the files, they got all this stuff, it's almost a cut and dried that we use them, but some vendor like this, it's got, there's 20 or 25 in the book, you know, you've got to follow procedures, and we've got to make sure that when the job's done, I mean, if you were using your money, or I was using my money, I'd walk out there and I'd make sure whatever I paid for was completed.
Well, I think you're correct, and we'll do that, and it applies to the golf club as well.
Pardon?
I think it'll apply to the golf club as well, because half the work they do that Payne has done for us this year has been on the golf course, and I think that if we get a bid by a vendor, then we won't have to worry about this in the future, but what we'll do is you bid it for an hourly rate.
Okay, how are we going to, how are we going to go about confirming what we were billed for was completed?
We'll have Mr. Griffin and Mr. Bell go out and do it.
I would like another person, maybe Mr. Hurley does, okay?
We'll send whoever you like, but if those, I mean, whatever the board's pleasure.
Okay, I want to make sure that what they did, because I know the stumps on number 17, on the west side of number 17, there was about, there was two or three trees taken down. The stumps are still there. There's other trees that I think might have been taken down. They did not stump it, and by the way, I think we have a stumper. We used to have a stumper. I don't know why we're paying somebody to do it unless we just don't have the manpower to do it. I know they've got probably a bigger one and more effective one, but if, well, I know we have one, I don't know if it's still operating or we still have it or what, but okay, I'm okay with Greg and David going out, because I trust that we'll get, we'll find out whether or not the job was done properly, but if you inspected it, you're saying that it has been, and, but I really looked hard, and I couldn't find, that's the only evidence I could find on the whole golf course where that was done, and I could have missed something, but I went both sides of both fairways, looked really, really hard, so. And if we didn't get, if we didn't get what we were supposed to get, we need a rebate, or you need to get the guy back in here to do it, and if he's not doing it, if he is not doing it the way we expect it to, I have a problem with him being on our vendor list at all, so. That's all I got.
We'll report back to the board.
Just for the record, this is a single supervisor's expression of concern at this point to the general manager. The general manager's appointing a committee to, or a group to go look at it and come back, so it's not really a sunshine issue that the board has not appointed a committee to report to the board. I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
Question for John.
Sir?
Our regulations in our policy manual, we have all sorts of these types of procedures, limitations, and so forth. What I don't see in most cases is what happens if they're violated. We don't seem to have any penalties involved. Shouldn't we have a procedure that if?
This typically is really, I'm talking off the cuff right now, understand, but I would think this would be very much akin to an audit report where they come back and say, okay, these procedures are not being followed, corrective measures recommended are desired, you need to do this. So, I believe the remedy at this point is we need to follow this and do it appropriately. Now, if, on the other hand, if the board, the other way to do it is to ratify the purchases by the board, you know, if it exceeds the bid limit, should have been bid, wasn't bid, money spent, gone, there's no remedy for that. I mean, how can you, you can't remedy that.
John, some of our policies, like the drug policy and so forth, there's prescribed, I don't want to say penalties, but prescribed accountability for misactions, and when you're talking about the use of public funds in any capacity, our district funds, and if we have limits, we have procedures, and we have no real accountability other than say, gee, don't do it again. So, I'm asking you, shouldn't we have as a further safeguard prescribed accountability, procedures, like we do with some cases like the drugs and so forth? I mean, to me, fiscal mismanagement, and I'm not saying, this is not related, I was going to ask this question anyway, is pretty serious.
Well, I would say this, you have your policies, you prescribe the policies. If for any reason the policies are not followed, there should be an accountability for adherence to the policy, simple as that. You employ the general manager, the general manager's responsible for overseeing the policies, and if they aren't overseen, then.
Be a lot simpler for a general manager if these were prescribed reactions.
I'm sorry?
I mean, everything seems to be discretionary, and if a general manager chooses not to exercise any authority over it, where are we?
Well, I think he's accountable to you.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, we had, in our new contract, we have a review of policy manual and employee handbook, so I would suggest that this be a big part of that review over the next several months.
Understands.
Anybody else? Public comment? Back to the board. Rule call.
Supervisor Helbert?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Halbig?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes. As we get into the action agenda, this is going to be Tanya's breakout meeting. She's going to fill in and kind of, like when you get your private pilot's license, you know, you work with the instructor for 10 hours, then all of a sudden, you're on your own, so here you go. Okay?
Okay.
All right. So, we really don't have any resolutions for this meeting, so we're just going to go through the staff reports, and at the end, we'll do some budget discussions. So, do we have any add-on items?
No, sir.
Okay. Petitions, communications?
None.
Staff reports? Securities first?
Yeah, I have a question on that. I asked Mike Hurley to come today to give us an update on this off-the-road vehicle problem that we have. It's not just over in Bianca, but it's also in other neighborhoods like on Cal Trev and so forth, so Mike, if you could fill us in, please.
Okay. Well, it's against a lot of driver four-wheelers on the road. We all know that.
Talk.
Sorry about that. We have been working with the Sheriff's Department on Bianca. We've contacted them seven times in the last month and a half about the four-wheelers. They have actually stopped the kids once, well, they caught them once. I was with the sheriff on Saturday doing some traffic over in that area, and he actually said to me that they have a hard time catching them. So, right, so I actually went over to the house on Saturday, knocked on the door, talked to the both gentlemen that are renting the house, explained to them that this is a retirement community, and that I've had nine complaints about their house on Bianca. They weren't aware of it, according to them. We've contacted the owner, which actually lives in Canada, sent him letters on it already about cars parked in the yard, rubbish in the front yard. I personally tried calling him myself. He has not called me back. He has not.
He hasn't answered your letter either, has he?
Excuse me?
He has not answered your letter.
No, no, he hasn't contacted us back. Hopefully, I did make another call a couple days ago now. He could be traveling, I don't know, so, you know, in his defense. But anyways, I have talked to both of the residents. They assured me that they are going to get rid of the four-wheelers. They did get rid of one. I explained to them the laws about parking on the lawn, which we've got, we've got four calls on that from the residents also. The problem is, is they can park on the lawn two days a week. Two days a month. I mean, two days a month, I'm sorry, excuse me. So, once we give them a letter, they stop, then the first of the month, they can do it again. The residents in the area don't understand that, so they start calling again. So, really, what we have to do is somehow change that rule, that they can't park on the grass, or come up with something where it's different, but legally, well, legally, they can park there twice a month, and they're doing it. Now, according to the two young guys that are living there, they promised that they would clean the area up, and they did apologize. They didn't give me a higher time or anything. I did tell them that there was a petition that, from the neighborhood, that people want them out of there. Hopefully, they are going to clean that area up. I haven't had a complaint since Saturday in that area. Now, of course, you know, we have the weekend coming up, so who knows, but that's where we're on there. The four-wheelers, the Sheriff's Department, we, anyone that we see driving the four-wheelers, we'll stop them, explain to them they can't be on the road, and usually, they do go home or whatever, but we get them all over, because the problem is they come from different areas and go out back, and like from Avon Park, we get them from, you know, and it's really tough to catch them, but we are, we are trying to deal with it.
That letter you sent to the owner, was that registered letter?
Yes, yeah, and I have all that here for you. I have a copy, and he actually, he owns another property here at Sonna Lake too, but we have no problem with that property, it's just this one here, you know, but it's, you know, I think it's four young guys that rent the house, and, you know, they have their parties and so.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Mike, why don't you tell them about traffic enforcement on ponds while you're there?
Oh, yeah, on Saturday, well, we've been working with the Sheriff's Department, because we've had a lot of complaints about people running stop signs, speeding, and the whole Sonna Lake, so we've contacted the Sheriff's Department, and we're looking at, to try to get to them here so many hours a week, but the sheriff's deputy that I talked to has actually set up an area, and on Saturday, he, in two and a half hours, he pulled over 30, 31, 31 vehicles in two and a half hours. On Sunday, he did another, I think he did another 16. Saturday, plus they also made an arrest, so what he's going to be doing for the next month or two, as long as he's in this area, he's going to be setting up by stop signs, speeders, and everything, so if anyone is riding around, I, you know, would tell you to slow down, so. And the Sheriff's Department is really, really good with us. The relationship, working with them has been very good. I'm actually very happy we're dealing with them, you know. Anytime you call them, they get out here, so. So, if you're speeding or going through stop signs, be careful. Anything else?
Thank you. While you're there, code enforcement report, how about a report on Brumfield?
Um, I talked to Bob this morning. He's still very sore. I don't expect him back for at least a couple more months. We do have one of, one of the security guards that, he's actually working, working a couple extra days a week with me. We ride around, we've sent, I think we sent about 16 citations out in the last month. Of course, we don't, Bob's licensed, he knows the code enforcement book in and out, so we are trying to learn all the ins and outs, which I think we've done pretty good so far. I've actually contacted residents personally if they have any problems, so hopefully, for the next couple of months, we can get by without Bob.
Next up, John McClure.
That was fast.
Yeah.
I didn't catch a nap in there, did I?
No.
With respect to the pending litigation report, excuse me, I think of notice to review the Severino case, Ayala, and note that it was filed on August 20th, 2012, amended complaint January 30th, 2013. The judge certainly took note of that, and he basically has entered an order that says, look, I won't hear this motion for summary judgment now, I'm putting it off until discovery's complete, and these are your requirements, and issued an order which I'll get to you if we haven't gotten to you, just got it myself, but it says that expert depositions have to be conducted by such and such a date, and sets forth requirements for completing discovery, says September 1st, you're done. Discovery is done. So, then we'll go through the motions for summary judgment. This case is going to get off my docket. It's been here too long, and we're going to get a disposition. It's not going to keep dragging on, so another thing that tends to do, frankly, is to spur mediation, to spur settlement and to get it done, so my anticipation is that's going to have an effect on that end of things as well. But I also expect that the way the plaintiffs have been acting, it's very likely that they're going to drag the discovery all the way out to September 1st before they engage in any meaningful position from there, so we'll just have to wait and see how it plays out, but I think that's what we can expect.
John, what are our costs right now, our legal costs to date? Do you have any idea?
I've not tracked that.
Tanny will have to check that for you.
I can research that.
I know the, there are costs involved. How much exactly? I don't know. Multiple thousands, I'm sure.
I know Mr. Gonzalez is a pretty high-priced guy. Has he had involvement in these steps?
Nathan, yes, he maybe had oversight more than anything else. He's involved directly in the actual motions and coming down to argue those motions and do that sort of thing. Nathan Pollak, who is a junior associate in that firm, or a junior member of the firm, I guess, he's, he has been the one that's communicated with me primarily, back and forth, keeping us apprised of what's going on in the case, and sometimes if it's just a routine order, they use a paralegal to send it down to us, and so it hasn't been major from that end of things. I mean, you know, Mr. Gonzalez isn't doing virtually everything himself by any means, so, but the dollar amount, Tanny would have to get that for you, because I don't get that information.
Are we still at the situation where our insurance people, if I remember in the past, they'd wanted to settle and were rebuffed? Is it? Am I correct in that?
I don't know that rebuffed is the right term. I think that settlement involves the participation of the other side as well, and the other side has rebuffed them, if that's what you meant, for sure, yes, because of this ongoing discovery issue, because of some other things they're trying to tie up, and don't forget that there's this issue of, well, really, what do we have? Because we only have so many people that came to the district, they're trying to get the district out of it to the extent they can. These other people that gave money to Mr. Severino but never called the district to have, they quote, "the vouch for" type situation, that's really the only way, our head is in the trap, if, the way I see it, and the way that Mr. Gonzalez sees it as well. So, we're trying to get as many of those people out of the case as we can, and then we'll just see what is left with respect to the district's liability with regard to the remaining plaintiffs who did in fact call the district. I think that's where we're at.
They are trying to schedule depositions of you, me, Al.
Dana March.
Dana March. Anybody else?
That's it.
I think those are the four they're trying to get. We don't have a date, I don't have a date yet.
This is almost May, and September 1st is going to be here very quickly, so I'm sure they know that they have to get those depositions prior to September 1st.
Mr. Grishaver hasn't been disposed, deposed, I should say?
All righty. Anything else?
That's all I have. The foreclosure report is before you. There were several new cases that were provided to us recently, and I think those are reflected, so.
Okay.
I got a question for John. John, if we got, if we got a line item in a budget to cover doing certain things, but we got a certain project that we're getting ready to do, and that project is over $10,000, isn't it a requirement that that project comes with the board for approval? We do advertising and bidding, so on and so forth, unless it's a, unless it's a purchase on a, on a?
Government.
Government.
I would answer it this way. I'm not sure what your question is, but I understand it to be this, that we have budgeted certain funds for a given project, okay? Now, we want to undertake that project. So, in undertaking the project, typically what we do is we have plans and specifications developed, we have to bid those out. Simply because it's in the budget is not approval to spend the funds. We have to go ahead and bid it out, get the estimates in, and then accept the bid, and then commit the funds, is the way it works.
That's what I thought, and it ties back into what I was talking about a few minutes ago, and I'll bring this situation up at the end of the meeting, discussions doing from the board, but I wanted to, I wanted to make, clarify that before I brought it up, okay? I've got a specific example of something like that.
All righty, general manager's report.
Tanya Kennedy, Finance Director. I'd like to give the general manager's report. Tanya Kennedy, Finance Director. I'd like to give the General Manager's report today. Uh, first, Car, um, Carpath renovations will begin the first week of May. Deer Run will be closed May twenty-fifth through June twenty-fifth. Uh, summer golf memberships are now on sale for $750 for a five-month period, May first to September thirtieth. Megan Bell was appointed to the Tourist Development Commission by the Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday to represent the golf industry. Uh, summer camp signups have started for residents and prior year camp attendees. We have added one more week to the summer camp series and summer camps will begin June eighth, ending August seventh. Uh, 150 tickets have been sold for the Dolly and Me Party Event to be held this Sunday at Island View Restaurant from two to four.
How many?
One hundred and fifty.
Wow. Is that, is that like a mother and a daughter, 150, or is it 150 couples?
It's mother and daughter.
So it's like seventy-five parents? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And a lot of American girls.
Dolls.
Dolls.
Oh, okay.
Last Friday, the district held two CPR classes for residents. Jonathan Joles is our certified instructor and both classes were full. Uh, we have finished clearing the right-of-ways on streets Fiskia, Urbino, Santiago, Florida, Monza, Manor, Sunrise, Romero, Palazzo, Castillo, Villabella, Lucadandra, Cadooja, Savona, and Pont Stilion. Yesterday, we planted 150 pine trees on Deer Run. Additionally, we lost three trees from a windstorm on Monday evening. Uh, one pine tree was lost on number nine Turtle, one oak tree on number fourteen Deer, and one pine tree on number three Turtle. Additionally, we have a oak tree that has suffered major damage on number nine Deer. Uh, staff is recommending the removal of this tree because it's now a liability and a safety hazard. Uh, this tree, we, we do have a picture of it, but it's basically, doesn't have a center.
Sure, yeah. It's all rotten in the middle.
Yeah, so. Through the end of March, the county has now acquired 384 properties within the district from units two, five, six, seven, and eight through the tax deed, which is the end of the estatement process. Um, and the district has written off all assessments and phase five bond balances and penalties associated with these lots in the amount of 6.3 million dollars. The county now owns these lots free and clear. Uh, for general fund revenue collections, we've collected ninety percent of our operation and maintenance assessments through March thirty-first. We've collected $12,600 in code enforcement fines and $27,000 in GPS advertising revenue. And additionally, 15,000 in special event revenue. And this is all for the first six months of the fiscal year. And lastly, uh, the district has required, uh, is required by public risk management, who is our liability, our insurance company, to have a insurance valuation report every five years. We've received our report from CBIZ Valuation Group and we have a total insurable value of over 20 million dollars on our assets. So if anyone would like a copy of this report, I, I have that in my office electronically.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Do we expect to meet our revenue budget this year?
Yes.
We do. Um, we have a pavement deterioration situation in our south entrance on Schumacher Road that seems to be drawing increasing frustration from the residents that use it. Um, have we worked with the county or contacted the county on trying to get that resolved? It, it's gotten pretty, pretty serious.
Is it, uh, our road or their road? I haven't heard about it.
It's Schumacher.
It's their road.
Uh, we'll, uh, we'll contact the screen.
I asked about three meetings ago and someone was gonna get, get ahold of the county, the same question, it's on Schumacher, right where you make the turn on...
I'm not, I don't remember it, but I'll, uh, make a note right now.
Well, it's serious enough that people are starting to drive around it and they're getting in the oncoming lane to do so, so.
Sure, I'll, uh, I'll contact them. Uh, road and bridge is closed today, but I'll contact them first thing Monday, oh, Monday morning.
I had asked you earlier about all these light poles that seem to still align Sunland Lake Boulevard on both sides. And, um, uh, you mentioned there might still be cable up on some of these poles, but, uh, do we know exactly whether or not all the available poles or surplus poles have been taken down? Or where are we on that?
I asked, uh, within minutes after you making that request, I asked, I sent an email to Duke Power. I got a response from Duke that said, "We'll look into it and get back to you." That there may be other vendors that, um, have lines on the poles. And when I drove by them, there are, in fact, some of the poles do have non-electric wires still connected to them. Whether they're active or not, I do not know.
Well, is that, that create a permanent situation with the guys of those poles? Or should they be, uh, should those lines be removed or what?
That's Duke Power. That's...
It's up to them?
Yeah, it's, it's their issue in the county right away.
Okay.
Dave.
I have a...
Um, I drove by there...
It's Dick.
I drove by and Comcast was out there replacing, um, uh, the cables, moving them across the road. So Comcast is moving them from the golf course side over to the north side.
Okay, that's probably the right one.
Maybe we can take a few down.
Once they get those moved over, then those poles will be coming down. And I'm also, they're gonna take down that one concrete pole down there further down where they, there's a, some, uh, Duke Energy has got some power cables all rolled up by the poles.
By Cortez?
By, no, on, uh, Sunland Lakes Boulevard, there's some cables all wound up and they've dug down the street. I don't, can't remember the name of the street. But they've gone down the street and they, they got it all rolled up down there. And they're gonna take that pole down. And it goes across the street, across Sunland Lakes Boulevard. But they're gonna take that pole out.
Alrighty.
One, one last thing.
Yeah.
This is for Mike. Uh, I had interesting call regarding, uh, these portable basketball nets that, uh, somebody seems to be counting them in the right of way, you know, at the edge of people's properties and so forth. Do we make an effort to get those moved back?
Um, can you have some?
Michael. Michael.
Sorry, Mike.
Get your five miles in today.
We have, uh, sent a couple of letters out, but, um, a lot of the homeowner associations don't allow them. So it's a lot easier to go through that end of it. Um, I mean, how do you tell, uh, the kids not to play the ball? I mean, you know, we ask them to move them in. They're supposed to move them in at night, but they always don't. No, um, you know. I haven't had many complaints, Dick, though, you know, actually.
I got this call, I just thought...
Okay, no, no, I haven't had, uh, we have sent a couple of letters out over the last couple of years, but, um, you know, uh, the homeowners associations usually handle. I know where I live in the preserve, uh, they're not allowed. I don't know, I don't know about the rest of the place, but, so.
I think this occurred in unit two.
Okay, that's probably, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. O.
Uh, unfinished business?
None.
Okay. New business?
None.
Committee reports?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, this is kinda what I had hoped for, is that we would take our current budget and go page by page and listen to what the staff has prepared in terms of ideas for the upcoming year. And then we'd throw our ideas in there and kinda mull it around and see what comes out of the whole mess, I guess, so. Um, and I thought the easiest way to do this would be just to follow the current budget. And, um, let me find the page here. I wanna start on... Start on page, um, fourteen. No, not fourteen. I don't wanna do that either. Yeah, I know it. That's what I'm gonna use. Yeah, I wanna start on page nineteen, which would be the administration expenditures. So I guess I'd like to hear from, um, Tanya, uh, in terms of, does that look like it's gonna be status quo this year? Or are you gonna have some additions or?
Uh, nothing additional. We'll have some other workstation and firebox upgrades to our servers, but that, that's all for administration.
Okay. If we went to budget for a marketing program of some sort, would we put it here? Or would you put it in the community? Or where would you put it?
It would be in community services.
Okay, then I'll talk about it then. Um, the other idea I had, it has really nothing to do with the budget, but I don't know when to bring it up, so I'm gonna bring it up now and is, um, like a fringe benefit for our full-time district employees would be to allow them to use the recreational facilities in the summer months at no charge as an idea to, uh, enhance our employment here. Anybody got any idea, thoughts on that?
You talking about the pool and...
Yeah, pool, tennis courts, fitness center. I mean, summer months, uh, nobody's using them anyway, so.
No problem with me.
So, alrighty, make note of that, please. Okay, on page twenty, we have community services.
Can I ask a question when you're...
Yeah, everybody jump in.
Uh, when you're in the general, uh, general fund, uh, anticipate any wage increases, Mike, this coming year? Or, Tanya? Any thoughts on that?
We haven't discussed that internally yet.
Okay. Staff additions, no discussion yet on...
No, sir, we haven't had those yet.
Okay.
I wanna go back to page nineteen. I see the, we have consultant fees in it for 75,000. Is that gonna be duplicated next year?
Yeah, what that was for.
I don't, I think that was that retail study or something, if I remember right.
I have a budget, it's 40,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The current year consulting fees is 40,000.
Yeah. And that'll probably stay in there, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you, were you on, uh, community services?
Uh, I am now, yeah.
Oh.
Um, I'm on page twenty now.
So I got a...
Oh, I got the actual book.
Yeah, okay, I got the final.
Community service expenditures. Um, I've had a couple of residents, um, suggest we have an adopt a street program, just as another thought to be thrown out, that residents would be responsible, say for edgewater, certain suction edgewater, and maybe put up some kinda sign saying they're in charge of it or something like that. I know we do. I, I agree with that. And the, um, one of my complaints is the, uh, uh, street signs, well, that wouldn't be here, never mind, forget that. Anyway, I'd like to talk about a marketing program a little bit. Um, Cliff Wood and Tom Coste and myself, we went and visited a, a online marketing company and talked to him in terms of how he does it. And, um, and then Cliff Wood and Larry White checked into some, um, hotel accommodations in terms of golf packages. And since then, um, David Ford and Cliff Wood and myself and Tenio have had a meeting in terms of trying to come up with some inexpensive way to start some type of marketing program. And, um, we, we think based on the guy we talked to, that the best way to do it without spending a lot of money would be a, a digital, like through Facebook and, uh, Google and, Twitter and places like that. Where, and Tenio checked into, um, I wanna make everybody aware of this report here too, that, um, the golf guys did back in 2012. It's a report by Wade Company. I don't know if any of you guys got, got this or not. It's a marketing type report. But anyway, in there, it, it shows where the people that live here today, where they came from. And Tenio went into, um, Facebook and targeted those particular areas. In other words, we can do advertising on Facebook that would go to those areas. And if we focused on people from the age of forty-five to sixty-five and had an interest in golf, we, there was a million people out there that we could, uh, basically some, indirectly be in contact with. And then by coming up with a, some kind of a golf package promotion, then that would be part of the ad. And then the people would go and click on that, which would create a response and also create an, an email address where then we can continue contact with them and also, um, talk about, um, community projects, um, our calendar, what's going on here, that type of thing. And, uh, we really haven't put a cost to that. Um, but I was thinking if we could somehow maybe put in the budget maybe, uh, $30,000 or something like that, just to throw a number out, uh, to kinda get this thing kick-started and, um, see what kinda response we would get. Um, also, David is looking into, um, summer golf packages, which we would promote on the east coast and the west coast for basically people already living in Florida, um, to maybe come and try us out here in central Florida. So that's kind of a quick up overview of what we're thinking. And I'd just like to get some feedback on that.
Well, I think the important thing is that we have to recognize if we're gonna spend that kinda money. And I, I would certainly be in favor of it, um, that it's, it's a competitive situation. And as Tenio and David know, we, we've had one company already that's been very patiently waiting in the wings to express their, uh, their interest in being of service, that's Buffalo Communications. And now you've identified another group. But, uh, I think we, we have to make sure that we follow all the procurement procedures in terms of who we want to, you know, to service in that capacity. But I think Kurt's right. I think, uh, now is the time that we dip a toe back into the water on this.
One other thing I forgot to mention is Tenio told me that our contract with Course Trends comes up this year, right? Is that correct?
January seventh, 2016.
So she's already looking at redoing the website and maybe changing companies. And, uh, so it all kinda falls in line with, uh, what I'm talking about as well, so.
Within the next month, we'll be putting those services out for bid.
Okay. So are we comfortable just throwing a number in here for now? A marketing number?
Probably. So we'd be, we'd be, uh, we wouldn't do this internally. We'd be...
Oh, yeah.
Associated with a, with a, some sort of like Buffalo or the, the other outfit that we talked about.
Right.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Well, I see Cliff is in attendance today. Um, when you were here and made your presentation, you threw out a tentative number, uh, I think that, uh, goes along with what Kurt was saying. It was much lower than 30,000.
No, his was much higher. His was 150,000, I think he threw.
No, no, he had something about using Facebook and so forth for, I think it was single digits, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Cliff Wood, um, I, uh, the number you're referring to is, uh, what it would cost for us to come in and essentially present a marketing plan for Sunland Lake.
Yeah.
The 150,000 dollars, uh, would be kind of a horseback number, uh, that would cover a full rollout of a marketing plan. Uh, so that's where the, where the difference lies.
I guess what I'm suggesting is that we kinda do a scaled-down internal type approach and, uh, see what kinda response we can get from that. And then if that seems to get some traction, then we go to your program or something of that sort.
Yeah, when I talked, uh, earlier, what, what came through to me was that, uh, the board doesn't have a large appetite for getting a lot of people here, uh, on, uh, golf package type visits without having first demonstrated that we know how to handle these people and have them, uh, have their exposure to us exceed their spec, their expectations. And that, that kind of led us to backtrack a little bit and, and, uh, look into... And that, that kind of led us to backtrack a little bit and, and, uh, look into, uh, what we could do to house people, uh, effectively, and there seems to be, uh, uh, an opportunity to do that. So, um, that would then leave the issue of, um, what we would, how we would go about handling the inquiries that, uh, Tanille would get from, uh, her electronic media approach. And, uh, so that would be kind of a dangling participle there. Who would, who would Sun 'n' Lake designate, and I'd suggest that there are people on the staff that I think have the capability with a little coaching to do a good job of that. So, um, I'm fully supportive of Kurt's idea of, uh, let's get started on a relatively , uh, cost-effective economical approach to demonstrating that we know how to go about this, and, and then at that point, you could entertain the idea as to whether or not you want to take it to the next level.
Cliff, before you go, a question. Kurt mentioned that you guys are not looking at, um, possible, uh, partners in terms of accommodating people when they come down. Where does that stand?
Yes, uh, Larry and I went down and visited Quality Inn. Uh, nice people, and, and they're trying to upgrade that property. Uh, but when we, uh, got back in the car, both of us pretty much felt that, uh, that would be kind of a dicey situation. Even their refurbished rooms, um, uh, you know, most of us do a lot of traveling and stay in a lot of motels, and I don't think any of us would look at those rooms as, as being a, uh, a really nice room. In other words, if, if we're trying to exceed people's expectations on a visit here, that's probably not going to cut it. Uh, we've looked into Holiday Inn Express. Um, we can arrange a deal with them where they would reserve some block of rooms that we would designate, five, ten, uh, per month, uh, maybe even twenty, with, with the proviso that within some date certain, let's say twenty days prior to the time when somebody would be coming, that if we haven't sold a, a number of those rooms, then they would revert back into their system and they would sell them. So there would be essentially a no-risk situation for us of having to upfront money to reserve rooms for, uh, packages that we will have sold or hope to have sold. So, and I'm also, I have a call in the Residence Inn. I'd like to see what they have to say. They are the, the number-one Residence Inn nationally in terms of, of people's satisfaction with their stay at Residence Inn. Uh, so if you could get a good number from them, uh, that might be a, a good backup. It would be nice to have people close, um, but that would be a, a nice backup for us, I think, if, uh, if for some reason we didn't have access to, um, housing at Holiday Inn Express. So, um, I guess the, the takeaway on that is there, with the exception of when you get into January, February with Race Week and, and all of the other things that go on in Sebring, um, it would probably, uh, not be easy to be absolutely sure that we would always have access to a motel room, but, uh, you know, as we, as, if we get involved with these people and build some experience with them, uh, that might work itself out.
Uh, did you, uh, check with any of the local realtors that, that handle short-term rentals to see what might be available internally here to set aside certain units and maybe look at those and see if there might be available half a dozen of those or ten of those that we could, we could guarantee a rental with a golf package? Have you checked on that at all?
Um-
I mean, that would be the best situation for somebody coming in here on a golf package or somebody that you want to show them the, uh, the community.
I'll just give you how I feel about it. Uh, well, I know the Ridge Realty has a very active business of, of running condominiums, uh, and other individuals handle it on their own. I've been in a lot of condominiums, probably as we all have, and, uh, some of them are pretty nice. Coming back to this idea of exceeding people's expectations, I, I think we would probably need to ensure that a given property has been refurbished in terms of, uh, furniture and, and mattresses and draperies and things of that nature. Um, uh, you know, you'd have to go like one by one and, and approve individual properties of being kind of up to snuff as we would like to have them. Uh, again, in this period from January through March, um, most of those properties are, are rented to people that are coming here for a month to three months, and, uh, I doubt, I'm not sure, but I, I doubt that you'd find very many people that own those properties that would be willing to set aside a week for us or something like that. Uh, it might be more readily available in this October, September, October, November time period.
Unless we guaranteed a rental to them for a certain period of time, and that's possible.
And now you're into upfront money again, and, uh-
And I know it's, you know, talking about bricks and mortar a long time in advance, but we've got this, all this property set aside and rezoned for golf villas, and, and we need to, we need to try to find somebody somehow or get together and talk about how we'd go about giving somebody the incentive to, to do some of that, uh, along, along between, uh, by, uh, by our eighteenth hole. That's, that's another possibility that would be really nice to have. I mean, that can all be set up however we want it set up, if we get the right partner, but somebody's going to have to start looking and trying to get somebody interested in that, so.
Conceptually, no problem.
I'm not smart enough to know how to go about it.
Conceptually, I have no problem, but, uh, from my personal perspective, uh, if we can demonstrate that we can get significant numbers of people here, if we can demonstrate that we can handle them well when they get here, and we can demonstrate that we can convert those visits into sales, you can approach those, that kind of a, an issue with a lot more confidence.
Cliff, have you looked into the Spring Lake situation at all?
No, I haven't.
Um, Joe, I assume is back at work, isn't he, Mike?
Yes.
Uh, they had a thriving program, uh, upwards of better than a hundred and fifty units in terms of, uh, the short-term golf type of situation.
Yeah.
That might be worth exploring, just to see-
I have a copy of their, uh, program. I don't-
Kurt knows a lot more about that than me.
I don't know if I brought it with me or not today, but I've got a copy and I'll make sure everybody gets it.
Yeah, I'm sure we could learn from that experience.
Yeah. I talked to Ridge Realty, um, a year ago about rentals, and I don't know if the situation has changed today or not, but last year she didn't have any available rentals. In fact, she had a waiting list for rentals, so I'm not sure we'd get too far down the road with, uh, weekly rentals. Anything else on, uh, Community Services?
Now, I look, can I, I looked at, through this, I think the best way that the staff on, on each department can look at it and look, look at this year's budget and look at their variances. You know, if you've got a variance, you know you, you don't have enough money probably in your budget, and you need to do it adjusted, uh, and I found that to be the case in several of the, several of the, uh, of the separate accounts, but that would be the only thing that, uh, I would have them, ask them to look at when they start putting together their budgets.
Recreation, do you have anything on your docket there?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can comment on the Community Services, um, the only other thing that I would like to add into creating more money if we're going to spend the money on marketing and getting people here is to update, um, this really nice pamphlet we have sitting in the office. The only problem with it is it has dates in it. So I would like to create, it's, it's a little booklet information about Sun 'n' Lake. It would be great to have for anyone coming in, so I'd like to get some pricing on, on getting a new one printed to help go along with our marketing materials, um, when these people do come down and visit.
Well, I think right now everything's on the table, and we'll take it off as we run out of money, I guess. I don't know. So, so yeah, if that's a good idea, bring it to the, put it in your, uh, proposals.
I don't, I don't know if this is the right spot, but, um, I feel very strongly that we need to have those bathrooms for the, um, the tennis and pickleball facilities, and we had had a, a discussion of that, I think, a year ago, maybe longer, that if, if we do that, Tanille, we, we certainly have, make room enough to have a welcome center where you could display these pamphlets and other materials and so forth. Um, I think that would be a very good, uh, good use of, uh, our funds for next year.
I agree. Okay, on to Recreation.
Well, wait, she's-
Oh, we are in Recreation.
You want to respond?
Yeah, I just, I, I definitely agree with, um, the necessity of the bathrooms at the tennis courts, um, and to have a kiosk for welcoming and also, um, possibly staffing to enhance our racket club services would be a, a great benefit as well.
Well, to me, that would be money well spent. Along those lines, uh, Tanya, we discussed earlier about those disposal bins, uh, that would be a real detriment if, if you located the, um, bathrooms in the facility on the north side of the tennis courts, which I think is where they, they should be because there's plenty of parking and access. Um, do you have any ideas what we can do with that, those, uh, eyesores?
Not at this time. There's, um, right now, um, yes, I agree that it could be an eyesore, especially with new facilities. We'd have to look into that.
Could we make it part of the maintenance yard program, move it down there, something?
Keep in mind the area that you have and the fact that these things are used twenty-four hours a day, and the maintenance yard is closed, plus you don't necessarily, you would want it fenced off and separate from your maintenance facility, and if you go back and look at your site plan, you don't have much land left.
Hmm, just an idea.
Yeah. Uh, those are there at our pleasure. All it takes is a phone call to get them out of here. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure where you would put them. I don't know of another piece of dirt we own that would accommodate that.
Well, I'd hate to lose them because it's convenient for a lot of our people, but, but I think we do need to look very carefully and thoroughly at, at alternatives.
If the county ever concludes a roll, uh, a residential, uh, service or, uh, recycling service, then they're obsolete.
What happens with, with the, the emptying of those, those bins? You have big trucks coming in, or what, what happens?
Takes them to the, either to the landfill or the recycling center.
And, and how often does that occur?
As necessary. They have a, they, they have a route they follow. Sometimes they get overloaded and we call them and they come get them, but I don't know the schedule, but the county seems to have it worked out.
Is it more than monthly?
Oh, yeah.
Plastic gets filled quick, and papers.
And cardboard. There's a, there's a lot of, uh, businesses using that to dump their refuse rather than set it out.
They don't care about it.
Well, that's something I think we, we need to really look at. I don't, I don't know why we couldn't. I mean, we got, this is a big district. We could pick a site, maybe, maybe someplace over on Schu, off Schumacher Road along in that area somewhere would be a reasonable place to have those positioned. It'd be better than right there in our main thoroughfare, and, you know, there's always been an eyesore, so maybe we could look at a different location.
Yeah. For the bathrooms at the rec center, or at the tennis center racket club, I guess I should call it, um, I asked, uh, Michael to check on, uh, portageons and, uh, see if maybe that would suffice for a year, depending upon the finances, and he told me that'd run about seventy bucks a week if we wanted to have a portageon, like inside the fence for the tennis players as a possible alternative for six months out of the year, which would run us maybe fifteen hundred dollars a year or something like that.
Yeah, I'm not going to be for a big, a big building with, uh, with, uh, bathrooms and, I mean, we already spent six hundred thousand dollars on that. I'd like to give it a rest for a while before we start thinking bricks and mortar and, and, uh, welcome centers and bathrooms for the-
Well, I saw someplace in, and I can't find it right now, but there was a restroom planned for the play area out here at forty thousand dollars, and Tanille told me that also included storage for the pool, so.
It's budgeted, well, it's on the five-year plan-
Yeah.
-for twenty sixteen.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, could we do something similar to that over at the racket club for this thirty to forty thousand range instead of a hundred and fifty thousand, which is in the, well, that's what was on the sheet here, so. And also, in terms of racket, I'd always like to kind of think of ways to expand our recreational amenities and, uh, come up with a couple of things, like abachi ball courts, maybe two or three or four of them, have them over here by the pool so that the pool people could handle the balls and that. And the other thing I thought of was, um, we have a lot of seasonal people that come down here, and we got a lot, miles and miles of roads. I was wondering if a bike rental program might be appealing to our seasonal, uh, homeowners and visitors, where they could come over here and rent a bike for a day for a few bucks or something. I don't know. Is an idea. Any other ideas for recreation or wants or concerns, or, no?
Uh, that's all.
How about finance? Anything different there?
No, sir.
System, no system, big system upgrades or anything?
Nothing right now.
Nothing at this time, no.
The, uh, the maintenance, the, the maintenance area, uh, that we're looking at, how about the systems over there? Is that all included in the, in the price of that, Kurt?
Yes.
Greg?
Okay. Code enforcement. Anything going on there, Kathy?
No, sir.
I wrote a new truck on here. I don't know why I wrote it, to be honest with you, but we don't need any more vehicles or anything.
Well, you have a vehicle that was totaled out.
Yeah, so-
And we were looking at, um, uh, I think Ms. Candidate had some thoughts on what to do with that vehicle, Bob's truck. You want to talk about it?
We can buy new. I mean, I, I mean, we already have in our five-year plan twenty-five thousand for the year twenty sixteen, or we could, uh, you know, order that now. We did receive insurance proceeds on that total vehicle, so, uh, it's whatever the board's pleasure.
No, I'm not questioning to order it now. I'm just wondering if we need to put it in our plan for next year.
It's, yes, it's in the plan for next year for twenty sixteen, yes.
Okay. All right, public safety. Anything changing there? You got enough people?
Well, I think Mr. Hurley is just going to ask for some more hours, uh, basically with security watch. Go ahead, Mike. Watch orders, I-
Yeah.
The watch orders are, right now are twenty-seven, uh, more this year than we had last year at this time. Uh, last year we were doing two hundred and sixty a month, so we'll be real close to three hundred. Uh, obviously, that, that's, that's more hours, uh, that people out there were getting, we're also getting watch orders from Tanglewood, um, and, um, so I think we are going to have to, um, add some hours for security on there.
Okay. While you're right there, I, you and I talked about the sheriff program, and we understand it's thirty-five dollars an hour for a deputy to come here.
Forty dollars an hour, Kurt, yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, it's forty dollars an hour.
Forty dollars an hour, and we have to do a minimum of four hours.
Three to four hours. Three to four hours, a shift.
Okay. It can be three to four, doesn't have to be four?
Yeah. Well, I've got two different prices, so.
Well, here's my point is, I kind of did a calculation and if we wanted a deputy here eight hours a week, you know, he could do whatever you guys would coordinate and run us about $15,000 a year to have, now, maybe that's overkill at this point, but I think you should put something in your budget to support that type of program.
Yeah, I mean, that would help us on the traffic, the speeders.
Well, I think we got to let people know we're serious about...
Exactly. I agree 100%. I mean, we get a lot of complaints about people running stop signs, speeding. I mean, I can meet in the back of someone and they drive right through.
Plus, it doesn't hurt to have a deputy sheriff car around here, period.
Exactly. Well, we have a lot that live here.
I know. In fact, we got a state trooper lives on Matanzas.
Yeah, we have two state troopers actually live here.
So that's good.
Yes. Yeah, so we're going to need more money for staffing.
Thank you. Okay, next one is building grounds and maintenance.
Well, along those lines, I was going to bring this up later, but in going through the minutes from the last meeting, we had a lot of comments about the size of that facility with regards to office space and so forth. I don't see any resolution of that. I don't know if we ever made a decision as to whether or not we're going to keep it as proposed or reduce it. There are at least three people on this, this board that questioned the size of it. Greg, what, what are you, what are you doing? Just going ahead as you proposed?
Based on the discussion at the last board meeting, we were moving forward with the drawing as it was designed.
You're moving forward with...
Preparing the bid documents.
Yeah, we had no resolution on that question, though. I would, I would ask that, we have some kind of response on that. Are we going to let it go as is or, Larry, you had a question? Dave, you had a question?
Well, I had a question about the size of the offices and the restrooms. I thought it was maybe a little bit of an overkill and I suggested making the, rather than going the full length of the building, to shorten it somewhat and, and be a little more reasonable with the square footage because number one, you're paying more for square footage, number two, you're paying more for the heat and cool and so on and so forth, although I know our costs are probably pretty high by using window air conditioners and kind of things we're using today. And I don't know how that would balance out, but I still think the office area itself is probably, needs to be looked at and maybe some alternate pricing put in the, in the bid whenever we go to bid it. It shouldn't be that difficult to do, I wouldn't think.
Well, we can, we can adjust it after we get a bid in, can't we? I mean, it's...
I think that's another after the fact type of situation. I would, I would like to have some kind of a resolution now so we have a clear direction to Greg as to what we want to do.
I guess I'm, I don't work out there and I'm no expert on it, so I'd assumed it was designed to best interest of the employees, I guess, but doesn't matter to me.
The way that's set up with the overhead storage, I think it'll make it hard to cut down the size of it. Now, it doesn't all have to be finished at one time and it definitely doesn't all need all new fixtures in it. And that, that will make a big difference in things. In my opinion, if we leave it like it is and get a, at least get a bid on it, if it's clear out of, if it gets clear out of hand, then we'll have to do some chopping on it.
Tanya, you got anything else?
A couple of other things that ties into buildings and grounds or recreation is the idea of a dog park that's been brought out of it the last...
Before we leave the maintenance facility, just, just to be clear, then what we're, we're doing is go ahead with the design as proposed and then we'll take a look at it. Is that right?
Yes.
The other thing regarding the funding of that, Tanya, you and I have talked about that several times. What would you think about suspending or greatly reducing our repaving program next year and take those, we had half a million in that from this budget year, and take a good portion of all of those funds for the next year to, to put that into the maintenance building pot?
Which fund you're talking about, Dave?
Paving, repaving.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're at the point now where we're repaving minor streets and I don't see any crisis.
We could certainly trim that paving budget. There are a couple of areas that did not get touched this year that I think are going to need some, some attention. A portion of Cortez, there's a portion up there by the wastewater plant, Unit 4 on Galano, where the road is failing pretty bad. So, you know, if you want to minimize or cut those costs a little bit, we can, we can address strictly those that are, that are, you know, in great peril. You know, again, it's the board's pleasure.
Yeah, I'm not proposing we abandon the program, but that we, that we, in the next year or so, that we, we greatly reduce it so that we can apply that to the maintenance.
You haven't had the roads graded, I think, when I say graded, rated, in about two and a half years. And I had in the back of my mind getting that done this summer. So as part of the budget process, you would see where your roads stand. Also, we should have a feel from the county by then and you can decide what to do as to what's going to happen with all the lots that are flowing to them. If they sell them, you've got roads west of Cortez you will probably have to spend some money on to resurface. So you've got some things hanging out there. And I think we have, what, 200,000 in this year's budget for resurfacing? So you've already cut it back once.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that we, we take that and that portion we had before and apply it to this maintenance building so that we can get that, get that funded.
You can do that.
I agree with Greg that the one portion of Cortez certainly, we weren't able to cover at this time. But I think we need to be very, very selective in the next year or two, barring any gold rush on our lots, which hasn't happened in 40 years, but, and then try to get this, this maintenance thing funded.
Well, if you're talking about funding, now, I want everybody to stay calm here because I'm going to say something here, but... I asked Tanya to give me the number of unimproved lots, improved lots, and, and actually lots with residents on them that made up the three and a half million that she had put in the budget for this year. And she gave me the number. And I took that number and multiplied by $50. And if we implemented a $50 capital improvement assessment for five years, just on those numbers alone, that would create a million dollars. So basically, every resident, every lot owner that's currently paying their assessments would pay another $50 a year for five years and that basically would pay for the maintenance building. Still got my head on my shoulders, okay. Anything else that's going on in the building and grounds?
We, we still currently have the EMS building funding of 100,000 for the current year. I'm not sure at this point whether or not we're going to be sending that contribution to the county in this fiscal or next fiscal year. So that may be something we pay for now or it may, we need, maybe need to move it forward to the next fiscal.
So no matter what the building costs, when it's all said and done, our exposure is 100,000, period?
Our maximum exposure.
Our maximum exposure.
That's right.
It's 100,000, yes.
So even, I think it was estimated it was going to cost 300,000, but if it costs 600,000, the county's going to pick up the extra 300,000, right?
Correct.
Okay. Roads and maintenance, anything there?
I do have to make a comment on the Cortez after they got done blacktopping it. It really looks nice. Are they going to grade the streets over behind Michael where they, where they've got the big lip on them?
Yes, they've actually gone through the process. When they did the excavation on Cortez, there was, where there was a big dip, they actually utilized that fill to put on the side of the roads of the, on the shoulders where those other roads were paved. They, they've yet to put the sod that goes in place there.
It's on site.
The sod is?
Yeah.
Okay. There are two courses of sod that were going in. I knew it was going in within the next week or so. That should be going in over the next several days and that'll mitigate that drop off.
Good enough.
Before we leave buildings and maintenance, what about the upgrading of the district office and the space that's currently vacant from the trucks and so forth? I think that's, that's a meaningful project we need to look at.
Well, the spaces that the trucks were in aren't vacant yet. There's, the fire trucks are still there, so until that EMS building is built, they won't be vacated.
I thought we gave everything to Sebring.
We did.
So why is it still here?
Part of what we talked about is keeping it here so you don't, they can use it for responding to calls in the district as well as not having a...
Has that, has that happened at all?
Yeah. You had them out here, when was the heart attack on the golf course? EMS got...
Tuesday evening.
We had it recently, it was Tuesday. I mean, they are responding and responding, Michael, you see them.
His people see them during all, after hours and stuff.
Just sit right there.
Yes, they're, they're here three or four times a week and they're quick. They're really quick. Also, the fire department, they're really quick. I want to say that. I'm real happy with the fire department for any reason why we call them, so.
I had a couple of people complain about our street signs, that the, the street, you know, the perpendicular ones are, they lean, they're not level.
Just give us location, we'll fix them.
How are you going to fix them? It's a, it's a, you have a sign, then you have a bracket and the bracket's not strong enough to hold the second sign, the intersection type sign, level and they're...
I love that you're right. Did the brackets fail?
You have done it?
Yeah.
They do it all the time, actually. Tremendous amount of sign damage.
Okay. All righty.
We also have a certain amount of sign thievery, especially with those that have feminine names.
Oh, they do.
Mexican hat, I think, is most common when we stole them.
Maybe ought to change the street, some of those names anyway, crazy. All righty, I guess we're on to utility fund here.
Well, a couple of things on the buildings and grounds we, that have been discussed is a dog park and we'd like to upgrade our Christmas decorations on the boulevard. That's something that has been, we've had numerous requests from residents, so Tenille would like to bring that to the table during the budget process.
Okay.
You on your utility fund?
Yeah, I think so. I guess.
Can we, can we do a comparison on our water rates and our sewer rates and see where we're at? Because there was some discussion about the expenses not matching the revenue, so on and so forth, so maybe we need to do another quick and dirty study as to see whether or not we're competitive or we're way under everybody else.
We can do that.
We can have a water rate study.
Pardon? So we already know that. We are way under.
I would like to see in that area a 10% raise in the residential water and sewer rate. Three dollars. It is three dollars to the average residents.
Why? Why?
We need the money.
Why? Well, here, I'll give you a why.
Kurt wants to raise everybody $50. You want to raise $3. Everybody on this board wants to raise the money.
That's not exactly right. Not right. Not right.
Okay.
Wrong. It's not wrong.
Well, in my opinion there is, we need to...
I wanted to take $25 off the, because we were, we didn't have the fire department anymore and nobody wanted to do that.
Well, I think if we're given, if, if we're giving our water and our sewer rates away based upon everybody else, I think we need to look hard at adjusting them. If we're not, then we don't adjust them. But that's, that's my standard.
We need to cover...
I'm not saying one way or the other right now.
We need to cover our expenses and the depreciation.
All right.
That's what we need to cover.
I sure would rather see that in the utility area than a 50 buck a year capital assessment.
Why don't you let us give you, this is really easy to do, to give you an average, pick a number, 5,000 gallons a month residential water bill and compare the three jurisdictions that sell water and sewer.
That's right.
Or five jurisdictions that sell water.
I'd do a...
Spring Lake, I don't think has much sewer.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Then you can see what the average is because short of a full-blown study, that'll give you a pretty good indication of where we stand.
Isn't Avon, aren't they make, Avon Park, aren't they making a living on their utility rates?
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're more than double of us right now. Well, to me, I think depreciation should almost be an expense of the, the water meters and all the other capital improvements that we spend out there and, and we should break even on our revenues based on depreciation because someday that, that sewer plant's going to wear out and you're going to have to replace it. We should, we should develop funds every year to be ready for when that day comes.
I'm going to bring up my favorite subject and John, you're involved in all the contractual stuff with these, with Tanglewood. When we're talking about utility rates and impact fees, all of the records, the agreements that I, and I like to see, see us go back and review those contracts. The Tanglewood, the, Tanglewood, when they did the first phase, 500 units, they paid us $248,000, I think, in, in impact fee because of the fact that we had to build that sewer plant. But I can't find any record of any other impact fees that were paid when the other phases came in. So there's no, and since, since they're paying on an unimproved, unimproved acre, there's no way to, to, to get impact fee money. And I think there's also a consumption review that needs to be done. There was a consumption of, a certain flow consumption, certain sewer consumption, consumption that if it, if we went over that, then, then adjustments will be made to their, to their impact fees. So that whole thing needs to be analyzed and see if the impact fees have been realized and, and do whatever is necessary to make the corrections if, if in fact the, the flow rates are different than the contracts and so on and so forth. I don't know if anybody ever goes back and looks at that, but it's, it's back what Kurt was saying about impact fee monies to pay for sewer and water plant improvements if, if in fact when we get to that point. I, I would like to see somebody go back and look at it and see if there are any record at all where they paid impact fees beyond the 500 units. Because there's 1,000, I think there's 1,094 permitted spaces now, so I don't think, I don't think it was ever paid. And I don't know how we can recoup it or, other than adjusting their, their utility rates at, at a different level than the rest of the district to capture that. And I think it can be done.
I would say this about that. As to collection of impact fees, I have no idea because that's not what I do. But the, assuming they were not paid, there's still a statute of limitations that's going to apply. And, and I'd be quite surprised if we haven't well exceeded that statute of limitations to collect that. With respect to increasing the rates within Tanglewood over and above everybody else to compensate for what is perceived as failure to collect that on our part back when, I think you'd find that to be discriminatory action. I think we, in other words, our rates that we apply are going to have to be standard rates across the board. So if we raise the rates, we're going to have to raise the rates for everybody, not just for them. I don't see where that would, could be upheld.
Well, who looks at these contracts and makes sure that, that they're being...
Nobody, nobody comes to me after I review a contract and the board approves it to say, okay, now, John, we want you to make sure that this is being enforced and that's being enforced. That's not what I do. I'm not here.
You done?
Okay.
Okay. Customer service, utilities? Anything there?
Nothing.
I still propose we add water meter depreciation in there.
Let me go back one step. There is a contract and it is in place, and there is no, there's no time limit on the consumption rates. So I would like to have somebody go back and look at the consumption rates and see if those consumption rates parallel what they're supposed to be, because there is, there is a portion of the contract, and I didn't bring it, the amended contract in there with me or the agreement with them, with me, that, that it says if, if, if those consumption rates are more, if they're less, then nothing happens. We don't give them a rebate. But if they're more, we get more. And it says it in the contract.
Indeed it does. My recollection of that is because these were, were small mobile homes, the standard rate that would be provided for a, a given residence, computed by the county, I've forgotten what the number is, but it's there.
I didn't bring the contract with me, but.
That, that was reduced based on the fact that it's not a standard family that, that lives in, in the mobile home. And so that, the, the calculation of those rates is what the impact fee was based on. So it, it would affect the, the impact fee payable. So what you're suggesting is, I understand it is, is some way to study the actual discharge as compared to what they had negotiated. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, yeah, there's, there's an average consumption rate. We've got this new system that's got everything in the database. It should be pretty easy to get to that number, I would think, and see if, what it is, because there is something in the, in the contract, and this contract is good, it doesn't run out, like you say statute of limitations. If there's a statute of limitation on a contract, then all these contracts are out. And you told me here a while back, they're not. They're valid, they're good, so they'll only be followed.
Well, the concern I have is this. That was the basis upon which the impact fee would be calculated. So the concern I have is if those rates are over and above what was in the contract, then that would affect the payment of an impact fee, which may or may not have been collected at this point, frankly. I, I don't know. I don't know if district records reflect that. I don't know if, if they weren't paid and, and the district missed that or what. I, I don't know. But, but it would affect the amount of the impact fee payable, and if the payment of the impact fee period has since passed, I think it would, that rate was to be recalculated and applied to potential future impact fees, in other words. Now that the place is built out, I don't know where, where we would go to collect more impact fees. That's, see what I'm saying? It's not, this, we're not talking about rates that we charge, or we're not talking about other things. We're talking about impact fees that we charge.
Could you just breeze through the agreement and see what, whether or not we got any, any grounds for anything?
See if there's a loophole or what, any grounds for us.
Sure. Next page, conservation and resource management.
The majority of the stuff we have in this year is going to carry over. We've already, we do have the sidearm boom mower. With regards to equipment, probably the one thing we will be replacing and that we're going to ask for is, is another skid steer. I do not intend to get the one we have, but we're approaching a couple thousand hours on it, and that is the most versatile piece of equipment that we have. It's got a, I draw a quick up on it, we use multiple, multiple attachments, so that's about all we're looking for there.
Is that bore on top of the cat, is that rented or is that ours?
The auger?
Yeah, auger.
That's ours.
How long have we had that?
We bought that when we started planting the trees on deer, or on turtles, sorry. So that was probably two and a half years.
You know, as they clear the brush off the golf course, you know, I guess the plan next year is to grind it up and haul it away, not use it on the golf course anymore. So if we do grind it up, where would that equipment go in this plan here?
What, what we would look at, probably the best scenario, and we discussed this, is to put an actual enclosed roll-off can and purchase a grinder or a mulcher, chipper, whatever, they go by various names, so that when, when large debris comes in off the golf course, it just gets run into that chipper to compact it to its minimum size. The problem with putting the mulch that we generate from debris back on the golf course is most of that debris that we generate has some degree of, of a noxious weed in it, whether it's an invasive exotic or, or some other species that's less than desirable. So to make a blanket application with the mulch that we generate's not a wise thing because we're in there constantly spraying, trying to get, trying to get rid of the seed base that we already have, and then we would just be adding more, adding, you know, putting problems right back on top of what we're trying to solve.
That's fine. I, I was just wondering where the cost of that equipment would go, would it go?
We would incorporate that into the, into the yard.
Oh, the maintenance yard? Yes. Okay.
Greg, I know most of the spraying we're doing is hand spraying. None of that can get airborne if no one can see, you know, we've been fighting this problem with turtle run. It's just a, out of, out of the box. We're talking, problems with the greens and some of the fairways on turtle run. Can any of that get airborne and that we're, you know, we're killing rubbish, killing brush here, and then we've got a green right there? Any possibility that that stuff?
Herbicides, herbicides in general can absolutely get airborne, and some of the labels have restrictions that limit the speed of wind that you can spray in. Before we start spraying, we use the AWAS system for Avon Park Airport, which is the closest meteorological station that we have readily available. We actually call and check the wind speeds. The only chemical that we use that has a wind speed restriction currently is 24D amine. The 24D is a broadleaf herbicide, and it would not impact the grass. In fact, Dave Bell, Mr. Bell, uses 24D to spray broadleaves in the, on the golf course. The probability of our herbicide having impact on, on the turf grass is, I would say is relatively slim without a direct contact.
Operations? Anything there?
Yeah, we've got a, a couple of things coming up. One is the infiltration study and repairs. Essentially, we, we've looked at the system and we looked at it about five years ago. We still get sand built up in some of our lift stations. It's a good idea to go through and look at those on about, on about a, you know, four to five year basis to make sure you don't have any major fractures. And some of you were on the board last time, some of you were not, but we found places where utilities companies, cable companies that board right through our pipes. So here you see a sewer lateral, and when they're running the camera through it, or sewer main, when they're running the camera through it, you see somebody's television cable going through the middle of the pipe. Problem is, is when that rains, all that sand that's around it goes in, then you end up with a sinkhole around it, and it, just the problems compound. So that'll be one thing that we'll be looking at. We've got a unit 23 emergency generator. We're looking to upgrade that. We've, we've made some modifications to that plant that require a little more, a little more energy, so that'll be in there. We're looking also to do some wiring upgrades. As you guys are aware, we had a, a power surge at the, I guess it was about a week and a half ago. The generator did kick on, but the, the VFDs, which are, which are basically a switch that control the speed in which the pumps operate to maintain a constant pressure, did not respond well to the switch, and it's because those VFDs are a general purpose VFD as opposed to a water plant specific VFD. So those are the types of upgrades we would look, look to do there. A lot of the wiring that's in those plants is antiquated. If you walk into our water plant now, we've got 15 boxes on the wall of those 15 boxes, and that's a round number, that's not an exact number. Of those 15 boxes, six of them are applicable, but the wires still run through everything. So it's not a clean system at all. We'd like to clean it up so we have something that is, that is much more, not just user-friendly but functional as well, because there are breakers hidden in boxes that are, that are relevant to the system operating that are not necessary, and they, they just cause problems. In addition to that, wastewater treatment plant interconnect. One of the things we struggle with at the unit four wastewater treatment plant is we don't get enough.
Biological.
Yeah. Biologicals, I guess, in there. It's primarily a graywater plant, which means that everybody that's on low pressure, when your, when your waste goes into the tank, the waste sits on one side of the tank, the graywater washes through, and that's what gets pumped to the, pumped to the plant. Makes that plant a little hard to operate. The other thing is we're, we're running that plant at a fractional capacity. Unit 23 plant, on the other hand, is run at a very high level of our total capacity, but, and it has a tremendous amount of biologicals available to it. So we'd like to be able to connect those plants so we can balance them out a little bit. When we get into our seasons of peak surge, we can send, send material back and forth. So that's, that's still conceptual largely. And then we have lift station rehab in there. That's an ongoing process. We've got 13 lift stations, and they're aging as we, as we go in and look at them. We've always got rails that, that the pumps hang on, the, the inner workings, and then also in some cases, we've taken, a couple of years ago, we did a master lift station where we inserted a liner and completely rehabbed that plant.
The, to connect those plants, you need a dedicated line to go from one plant to another?
Yes.
What size would that be and what would the cost be?
Probably an eight to 12 inch line, and it would run up frontage road. And the cost, we've got a rough cost estimate in there of $150,000, again preliminary. We will look at it much closer if, if we become serious about doing it.
The only thing I'd add to that would be depreciation where it applies, I guess.
Well, that applies to all utility.
Well, that sounds.
If you cash fund utilities, it will apply to water and sewer.
One thing, just an update outside of the budget, our VAC trailer arrived today. Our GPR, we got a couple of weeks ago, and the guys were trained on it. We're now doing locates within 10 minutes that have historically taken hours. We're also starting to find all these mysterious valves that we have on a map that are buried under eight to 10 inches of sod. So that, I think that's been a very good purchase, and we will, in the very near future, start our valve exercising program, and that'll bring a whole new list of to-do items as we find valves that have failed.
Alrighty, I guess we're done with that. We're on to the golf fund, I guess.
David Ford, Sunning Lake Golf Club. You know, based on our, our forecasted revenue and kind of where we're forecasting to end up this year, going into next year's budget, I think, you know, to improve on some of the services and the expectation level rising at Sunning Lake, as Mr. Wood, you know, put, if we get people down here, we want to meet their expectations, so they will move here. I think that we will be asking, you know, for just a couple of things from a capital standpoint to improve our amenities, and we would also ask for some more labor on the golf maintenance side to improve detail orientation on the golf course. You know, more edging of the bunkers, it would be done. And I can let Dave talk more about that. But we would also ask for more labor in the restaurant as well. As you can see, the restaurant revenue is, is very high this year. We've done very well, but we've also exceeded our labor budget substantially, so we would obviously ask for some more labor in that area. From a capital standpoint, we would ask for ice and water stations at the remaining restrooms on the golf course to improve that amenity, as well as ice and water station at the clubhouse to replace the one that's out back now, to improve the appearance and the aesthetics of that area. And then we would also ask for tee amenities. And when I say tee amenities, new tee signs, new tee blocks, obviously to go along with the improved detail around our golf course, but also improve those amenities so that the aesthetics improves as well, just to improve the image of Sunning Lake when people come and play. Other than that, it would be our normal, you know, we'd, we'd continue with our equipment replacement program, and the, the rest would stay, you know, fairly normal.
My only thought in terms of beautification, if you want to talk, is the landscaping on both courses look dated, look old. I mean, they're obviously 40 years old in a lot of cases, but to me, I, I don't know, if, if you're trying to improve the image, I think you need to seriously look at the landscaping around some of the tee boxes as well.
And, and that could be part of, you know, the tee box amenities, raising that level up. If we do that, I would like to look at if we do the, the Sunning Lake landscaping plan with the signage that you are presenting, and to follow along with that, the same type of theme of plans that they're going to be using in, in that type of landscaping would be something that we could look at, carrying that theme throughout the golf course.
I talked to Dave about maybe looking into, which is, it used to be very popular, but it's kind of because of tax reasons that corporate memberships aren't as popular anymore, but how many Chamber of Commerce members are there now? There's a huge number. Forgot what it was.
I believe it's in the low, like 710, yeah, it's in the high 600, 700.
750, so I, I said, we had to think about having a Chamber of Commerce as a starting point, corporate membership, where maybe you would take, each membership would have four single memberships, which would be worth $12,000 roughly, right? And then as an incentive to use the amenities here, that maybe the corporate membership would get a $2,000 on the books credit that he could use to entertain his customers, he could take them golfing. So it becomes a, a deal for him to commit the $12,000, and maybe we can get some more revenue as another possibility as, as well, so.
Okay.
I, we had some members thinking because the restaurant makes money, that the whole golf operation makes money, and now all of a sudden this idea of having a member room and, you know, that we, we do that instead of do some signs and $250,000 and yada, 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 all that stuff. Well, we know that a member room probably won't happen because we're a public golf course, we're number one, and plus $250,000, I get the floor poured and that'd be about it, so. So I came up with an idea, and Greg, you want to pass those sheets around? In terms of enhancing our clubhouse, and also Dave talked to me about creating a fireplace meeting area outside. So what I came up with was on the clubhouse, the south veranda, if you want to call it that, the screened-in area, would be to convert that to a air-conditioned, glass-walled, basically a meeting room, and to me, because it would be glass, it would give you the, the best view of the lake, the best view of the golf course. So to me, it would be premier dining out there for, also by the superstructure already in place, the cost would be very minimal to do that, in my opinion. It would also create a meeting area for about 60 to 70 people that you could put into this room. So the clubhouse could actually have three different functions going on at once. They could have the function in there if it was a small function. They could have the main bar area for the golfers and anybody else for casual dining, and then also you could have your banquet room. So there, there could be three things going on as well. Also, the impact on the kitchen, there would be no impact on the kitchen, according to Dave. And so what I put together was basically a proposal, and as you go through the slides there, it would be on the, again, the south side of the clubhouse, and so the, the veranda, if you want to call it that, would be glassed in, and you would exit where you exit now, and also you would exit on the north end of the west end, if that makes any sense. And then there would be, outside of that, where the, there would be a deck area. Go back a couple of slides. Whoa, okay, right there. That checkered part would be, actually be a. there, it would be on this, again, the south side of the clubhouse and so the veranda, if you want to call it that, would be glazed in and you would exit where you exit now and also, you would exit on the north end of the west end, if that makes any sense. And then, there would be outside of that where the, there would be a deck area. Go back a couple of slides. Whoa, okay, right there. That checkered part would be, actually be a deck off and it'd be about a 30-foot by 30-foot deck where you could put about eight to 10, six to eight seated tables out there with umbrellas. So, especially in the winter months, I would think a lot of people would like to go outside and just sit outside and have a drink and you would have a nice view of the golf course or I shouldn't say golf course, a whole 18, have a great view of the lake as well. Go on to the next slide there. And then, where they're showing there, that deck, because that grass along that wall there, it always looks bad. So, basically, we'd replace the grass there with the deck. So, the deck would go all the way down that side. So, you would exit the middle area there on the wall, you would put in a door there where you would, so you could go from the screened area, the north or the west end of that would stay the same. And so, you could exit out there and then go out onto the deck. That would be the west side there. That, that was thrown in as a, the next slide, go to the next slide. That is, that was thrown in if you wanted kind of double wall, which I don't like the looks of it myself, but that was just thrown in if you wanted to air-condition the west end versus air-conditioning the south end and putting two rows of windows in there. So, my proposal is we wouldn't do that. So, so the next slide would show the deck area and the.
Wait, wait, you went right over that thing.
Yeah.
Are we enclosing that?
No, no.
Not enclosing that?
No, just forget that slide.
So, what are we enclosing?
Nothing. This we would stay, this would stay screened in the way it is right now.
Alright, and the.
And then, the south end would be glazed in.
The south end would be glazed in.
Right.
Not double decked, right?
No. It'd be, what I got a quote on was using patio door panels, four foot wide or three foot wide, depending upon the spacing on the pillars, and eight foot high. And that wall out there is about 11 feet. So, basically, you would almost have floor-to-ceiling glass. So, you would, if you go into the banquet room now and look out the window, you've got window sills that are almost as high as your eyeballs. So, the view is really blocked. You really don't have a view in the banquet room. So, what this would do is create a great view of the lake and the 18th hole as well. So, the left part of that slide is, would be the deck area and then the right side would be to address David Ford's request to have a, basically a wall, a fire pit and casual or soft seating around that, again, overlooking the lake. The next slide, that's basically kind of showing where you would exit from the air-conditioned area into the screened area. So, the next slide, you can skip all that. That's kind of, actually, those pages there are pages of where you came from, right? Those are pictures of the fire pit where you were at in.
That's correct. In Aiken, South Carolina, at Woodsup Plantation and then Eagles Landing as well.
So, we'd kind of try to duplicate something along those lines as well, so. Keep going through the slides to the, and there, I prepared a cost estimate, in my opinion, that you could do all three sections for roughly, probably about $150,000. Because the deck got bigger than what I originally estimated and the, so I would say you'd be looking around $150,000 for, to do something like that, which I think would increase the amenities of the clubhouse. It creates a nice casual meeting area and so there, I guess, done selling.
Give you extra seating of how many on the glassed-in room and?
Well, the glassed-in room wouldn't really change because you already got tables and chairs out there now, but you would gain probably another 50 seatings on the deck and also, the fire pit would probably create another 15 to 20 people.
The problem was that south area right now is not getting used because it's hot out there.
Yeah, in the estimate, I put in blinds as well, so if it got too hot, you could always cut it back a little bit. As an idea.
I would say that, you know, this would increase our amenities and would be a nice addition to the clubhouse. It would also increase our overhead. We would have more payroll, where we'd have more, obviously, we'd have more air-conditioned space that we would need servers in. Also, the expectation of the board on the management and on the restaurant would be that this space would be filled and we would, we would fill it. We would create more reservations, more parties, more events in those areas. And one of our biggest member complaints this season was the fact that sometimes when you, they would come in off the golf course, there were not seats for them to sit down. Maybe outside, but they didn't want to be outside. They wanted to come inside and sit together. So, while I believe it could be a very successful addition to our clubhouse, we would create more revenue for the restaurant. You know, we would also have to include the overhead that goes along with that and the fact that the complaints about not having a place to sit would still be there.
In your kitchen, in your kitchen, almost, almost as far as output of food, it pretty much saturated to, for the volume with the size we've got now. So, what about, what about trying to service additional people, so on and so forth?
In talking with Kevin about some of the additions, he has no, he doesn't feel like that, that that would, you know, affect his ability to service it. He, basically, his needs are more storage, which we can, you know, accommodate out back in that open area in several different manners. I mean, I haven't really researched that enough yet to give an educated answer. But, and also, if possible, you know, we could look at a new dishwashing area to where that we could utilize a little bit, our space a little bit better. But, basically, he did not have any concerns with that, you know, type of design. If we made any type of brick and mortar, you know, and we made a much bigger facility, then yes, he would have concerns.
Yeah, I've looked at that myself too and I'm not too sure there isn't something can be done, but maybe not to this scale. I don't, I don't, I don't like the looks of the deck all the way around both sides of the thing, but you know, I've got some ideas I'd like to kick around with you too that might, might be something that we looked at a different, from a different point of view. I didn't know if we're going through all of this to, I know there's been some discussion about it, but I'd like to, I'd like to look at maybe a scaled-down, make a little scaled-down version of this. Is that possible that we could?
It's just an idea.
Absolutely.
Throwing mud against the wall, if you will. Also, you could do it, you don't, you wouldn't have to do all three phases at once. I mean, if you liked the idea of the glassing in, you could do that one year, you could do a deck another year, you know, you could kind of walk your way through it as well.
What about, we talked about, you and I have talked about the kitchen needs and dishwasher and so forth and we've got that wall in front of the wall. Has any thought been given to perhaps enclosing that, roofing that and accommodating what Kevin needs to?
We can look at that. We, you know, I haven't done a full, that is something that I can bring to the table during the budget process. I'll just need to do a little more research. But, that's really, his needs are storage and, you know, he would like to move around the dishwashing area a little bit if he could. Obviously, those dishwashing machine, those machines are not cheap and, you know, as you get bigger and bigger, they get much more expensive and take up a lot more room, which I don't think we have, but we can research that area out back and see what we can provide for Kevin.
To me, that's about the only area that you can, expansion area you can, you can utilize without knocking out walls and so forth.
Right.
Anybody else got anything?
Yep.
I'll throw something against the wall here. You know, the membership is, again, has this idea that the restaurant is making money and so, the golf course is making money and we all know, if they come to a meeting, you know that's not true. So, my question is, if this was a standalone restaurant, they would have to be paying capital improvements on their own, they'd be paying rent or they'd be paying a loan to a bank for a building they built and should we think about the restaurant paying rent to the district for the use of the clubhouse? Which would take, I know, it's confusing, but.
Not sure how that would work.
Basically would, huh?
I'm not sure how that would work.
I don't either, but I just throw it out there.
We have a management agreement now. They're here under a management agreement, meaning they are us, so to speak.
Yeah, I know. I just.
Okay.
Thought maybe it would take care of some of the rumors flying around here anyway. Okay, so it's a good, bad idea, that's okay.
Kurt, and, you know, to, to your point, I mean, you're correct. As a standalone restaurant, you know, currently, right now, for every dollar that we bring in, we get about 12 cents of that dollar to the bottom line. In a standalone restaurant, you, they need to get, you know, 35 to 40% of that to the bottom line to be successful and, you know, to be a profitable entity. Since the restaurant does not have to pay the rent that, you know, that you speak about and, you know, there's other things that don't fall under the restaurant line, you know, we are doing well, but if we, if the restaurant had to stand on its own, it would be a struggle to get to a break even.
Dave, let me ask a question there. Do we need to bring in an outside person that's in the restaurant business to help us a little bit to get that margin a little better? Because, like you say, it's only 10 or 12% and it's not a very good percentage.
The answer to that, which you may not want to hear, but I'm going to tell you anyway, is the fact that we're going to have to raise our prices. Our prices are way too low for the market. If you go to Orlando and try and get the same thing or Sarasota or anywhere else in Florida, it's going to cost you, you know, I'm not going to say double, but it will cost you a lot more. And that's, that's the reason our margins aren't what they should be.
You can't eat at the outback, you can't eat at 18 East, you can't eat in any of the major restaurants down 27 for 11 bucks.
Yes, sir.
Somebody mentioned about a stage for the clubhouse. Are you going, is that part of your deal?
I apologize, I did forget about that, yes.
Apparently, I take better notes than you do.
The stage for the clubhouse, since we are doing more entertainment at the clubhouse and we have members that are helping us set up those events, for example, the St. Patty's Day event that we had, which was very, very successful, I think the need for a stage, especially at the price that we would get it, which is around the $4,000 mark, $4,500, would make up, you know, because to rent it, it's about $500 every time you rent a stage. So, you know, the $4,000 over time, it would basically pay for itself.
Okay. A year ago, we talked about Sunday NFL ticket at the clubhouse and we didn't do anything. For this budget, could you bring a cost factor associated with that if you would be interested in doing that? I don't know if the restaurant would want to do it or not, but.
I can bring a cost factor to you. DirecTV, who is who we have in the clubhouse, to do that in a restaurant setting is extremely expensive. For your home, it's probably a, you know, a couple of hundred dollars a year. For a restaurant, it's a couple thousand dollars. So, you're looking at, you know, would we make up the difference? I didn't believe we would. That was part of the reason I didn't do it for last year. This year, I know we are planning on switching to Comcast and when we do, it may be a different story, I can find out.
I don't think Comcast has it, so that would take care of that idea. I think they have what they call red zone where they.
Right.
Show you the, once they're inside the 20-yard line kind of thing.
And why are we switching?
Actually, that's something that needs to be bid.
Why, what has generated the decision to switch?
Mr. Kennedy has looked at switching our internet service, which would include our cable TV, to Comcast because it's a lot less expensive than our current provider. However, based on our conversations today and conversations we had earlier this week, that's something we probably need to bid out.
It is, it is much less expensive and it provides us with a much higher internet speed for less money. So, it kind of makes sense, but I, I mean, I understand that we would have to do, you know, the bid process.
Well, every time I'm in the clubhouse and we're, you know, at dinner or something like that and you have the TV on, I don't, I don't see a whole lot of attention to those TVs. What sort of a difference, do you have any guesstimate as to the impact of having those TVs there? Do people come in to view games or?
Yeah, I think they do. I mean, we have people come in off the golf course. They, they request for the TVs to be changed to either a golf tournament that they would like to see or a basketball game that they would like to see, especially in March, during March Madness. We had plenty of people asking for, you know, the TV to be changed to, you know, the appropriate channel for whoever they were rooting for and during football season and NASCAR, they asked for the TVs to be changed to whatever team they want to watch.
Anything else along those lines? On your five-year plan, so anything that's listed under 2016, is this stuff that you plan on going, even though we didn't talk about it today, you plan on going forward with it? Is that kind of the, and I use an example.
We need to review internally.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Hey, John, when did you say you're going to miss some meetings? I forgot.
I will not be here for either the May 8th or the May 22nd meeting, those two meetings.
Okay.
David will be present for both meetings.
Alright. Anybody else got any comments on this? No? Well, I guess we'll go to public comment then.
Cliff Wood. Back to my favorite topic, some might call it an obsession, anyway. Since we're kind of brainstorming here a little bit, an idea came to me. It wasn't my idea, but it, I think it has merit and, but it kind of leads to a broader kind of concept, which would be in the direction of either delegating the staff or the board, dedicating some time to look for ways to build financial support for a marketing plan. For example, one idea that I'm referring to came to me, I think it's a terrific idea, would be to impose a transfer fee on real estate transactions. Since the buyer benefits from being brought here, for example, on a marketing program and the seller benefits, you know, supposing there was some amount of money imposed as a transfer fee, part of which would be paid by the buyer and part of which might be paid by the seller, that would generate funds to advertise the cost of communicating to them through a marketing program. I'm sure there are a lot of other ideas that might be generated that would help build a fund of money that would support marketing Sunland Lake. And so, I'd like to just throw out the idea of looking at some means by which the issue of funding a marketing program might be addressed either by the board, delegating some responsibility to the administrative staff to explore the issues or the board itself dedicating some time to generating ideas that would accomplish that purpose.
I know, I, I picked up a newspaper celebration one time when they, any, any time there's a transfer, real estate transfer, the person. there's a, a transfer, real estate transfer, the person that buys, buys the unit, or buys a property, has to pay one-year, one-year assessments that goes into a capital improvement fund. It doesn't go into anything but that. So, that's one way of trying to get something started that way. I mean, I don't know if that's widespread, have you heard about that, Mike, before?
I have not.
I know, I know they're doing it in celebration, but-
Well, we stayed at a housing community in North Carolina, and if you bought a lot in there, it was eight thousand dollars right up front that they took for capital improvements.
Okay, but that's a, who owned the land?
I don't know.
I expect the people who ran the government probably owned the land.
Well, maybe so, yeah.
Yeah, you know, before we get too far down this road, let's just address what I consider a major issue, which is any fees imposed by the district have to be based on benefits. That's, that's just day one, basic. So, the problem is, everything you're describing has a developer, it has, own a controlled land, they're the ones who control what goes on within that community, it's not a public community, so to speak, it isn't a public entity.
Okay.
And everything is different with them and us, so we need to recognize that upfront.
Would that be a non-starter?
A non-starter. Transfer fee, non-starter. I can't imagine how you could do that, Cliff. I like the idea, but there's just no way to do it or enforce it.
So, there's a bad idea, but there may be a lot of other ideas.
Good idea, I encourage that.
For example, I just heard that the county's going to end up with a three hundred lots out here. They have an interest in disposing of those lots, maybe they would be willing to do something that would help us bring people here, things like that. There may be other grants available from public or, or private funds. I'm just wanting to throw out the idea.
It has been thrown. Anybody else? Back to the board, oh, here, one more.
David Bell, Golf Course Superintendent. Greg did mention earlier about the, I would like to just talk a little bit about the tree on number nine, that Greg mentioned about, they got damaged in the windstorm on Monday. You know, as much as I hate, and I think a lot of us would hate to see that tree go away, you know, we have agreed and deemed it to be a liability, and I know if, you know, once that tree is taken out, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of, you know, phone calls, I just-
Excuse me, Dave, is that nine on deer?
Nine on deer run.
The big one on the left?
Correct.
My favorite tree.
I'm sure there's a lot of people that would like to see it go away, but, but it is a-
It's been hit so many times, it finally died from being hit so many times.
It is very integral to that whole, and, you know, some things that we've talked about replacing it, you know, we've, and it's a perfect, it's, it's a good reason, or it's a good story to tell about why we're doing the tree replacement program that we are doing. It's because a lot of pivotal trees that we do have are in, in this type of situation. In replacing that tree, we knew we were going to have to replace that tree in the next four to five years, that's why we did put the one tree in front of it. Now that we've currently lost it, you know, I think we need to look at, you know, maybe replacing it with a much larger tree, which is going to be a lot more cost, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody's okay with the removal of that tree.
Dick's happy to hear that, you're going to put a big one back in there.
Did it hit over it now?
Huh? No, the, the center part snapped off, and it's still laying in the tree up there. They got it all roped off, so somebody doesn't go in there, but-
Was it?
No, that windstorm Tuesday, whenever we had that gust of wind, was it Monday night?
Did you see, did you see the tree that blew down in Corino's backyard?
Uh-uh, I didn't see that.
Oh, yeah, it, it's, if it'd been closer to his house, it'd have cut his house in half.
Holy cow.
It was a big one. Fell towards the house and towards his gazebo there, and missed it.
All righty. Well, back to the board, any further discussions on the board?
Yeah, I got to bring, I got to bring this thing up, I was, I asked McClure about it earlier, and he, back, talking about the tree planting, that's another job that should have been bid out, because that, that, in my, in my opinion, was not, was not part of the conservation reclamation over on Turtle, it was a separate project all, all together.
He knows, him and I were going to have a meeting.
Anyway, that, right now, we're looking at, we had forty, forty live oaks planted, two-hundred-and-forty-nine eighty-six each, and we got ten, four hundred, four hundred pine trees at ten dollars each, so that, that's almost fourteen thousand dollars we spent on that project, and it was just something we just turned, we just took off and, and started, the board had no interface with it, I don't think, I don't think any of the agronomists with Billy Casper was involved, I don't know how it got started, I, it was a surprise, and it, you know, that, that bothers a lot of people, but, but here again, that's another, another violation of, of our purchasing procedures, and it, we just need to, we just need to follow the rules. I mean, we got, we got them there, if we can't, if we can't follow them, then, then we need to, we need to, we need to do something. And, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know, other than the fact that when people violate the rules, something needs to be done about it. Do you agree that that should have been bid, Greg?
I do not. It was, it was actually, we utilized several different vendors. The way the policy reads, if we use any individual vendor, and it goes over ten thousand dollars, it needs to be bid. We did not use an, a single vendor, we used multiple vendors.
Well, you used two vendors, Sunshine and I forget the other, name of the other place, but, but-
Neither, neither of them exceed ten thousand dollars.
Pardon?
Neither of them exceed ten thousand dollars.
Two hundred, well, you've got forty, you've got forty oaks, you've got four hundred pines, and it, the bill is thirteen, almost fourteen thousand dollars. It doesn't exceed ten thousand dollars.
That is two vendors. That is not one vendor. The threshold is-
It's a project. You can use fourteen vendors, if it's over ten thousand dollars, it's got to be bid. You know, I had a buddy back home that thought all the rules and all the laws were for anybody else, he's a great guy, but, but it's, that's what it is, either, either follow the rules or, or else, you know? Well, you can laugh all you want, this board never knew what was going on there. That's all I've got.
Anything else?
Well-
Boy, this run in this place.
John, you're staying after this meeting?
Am I staying after the meeting, sir?
Yeah.
If I'm being asked to, apparently, the answer is yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.